Call the Johnson City Council Meeting number 24-22 to order. Nicole, roll call please.
Member Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see a whole bunch of young people in our audience this evening. We always like to ask the young people to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We also have the outgoing county supervisor, Bob Brunel, on the audience. So I think I'll ask all of you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughter) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, there are two items that we are going to be removing this evening from the agenda. The first item is Item Q on the Consent Agenda related to the bombers reforstation plan. And the second item that we'll be removing from the agenda is on the Non Consent Agenda. It's Item C, and this is Item To Consider Possible Action Related to a Closed Session.
Okay. Counsel, any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
(inaudible).
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Ready?
Here.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications. We have two scheduled public communications this evening, and they happen to make up most of our audience, so it's a good thing that we have them on the agenda. The first one is a recognition of the Johnson Boys Golf Team, Class 4A Champions. And I was expecting to see purple, but I love the pink. So why don't I invite you forward?
So, I have been there, I am not at all, so I know very little about you. You may have to, you may have to correct me as we, as we, as we start commenting, but I, but I don't want to blow my mind, what your story about your, about your big win. So, I just want to share with everyone, have my back for you all, but, but just some of the information that was in the, the joint register card. First of all, it said that for the second time in three years, he won a Class 4A Boise Golf Championship. Congratulations to you.[216.56][216.56](applause) Said that the ratings took charge by shooting under 300 over the first 18 holes on Monday, and then heading off way over Catholic, West Monroe Valley, and Pleasant Valley on the second day, which went to 45. It was on to say that Johnson won for Johnson's main score over the 36th hole, 607. We look Catholic with 612, and Valley had to settle for third with 613. Johnson ended up with three golfers in the top 20 individually. Andrew Johansson, Andrew, congratulations, became in second with an even par score of 144. Now, Councilman Cope would understand all of what I'm saying.[271.12][271.12](laughter) Because he's physical.
(inaudible).
Earned a medal by placing sixth with 150, and sophomore Henry Baker came in 50 with 153. There he is. Wow, that wasn't, that wasn't all of it. I mean, we had Kobe Stanton, who was cold with it. Okay? Kobe came in 49 with 162. Derek Kramer finished 58, 165. Nicholas Ferenza and Jayden Young combined to play 72. I always, you know, I place, I've always played sports for primary races where, well, actually running races, you want the lower scores. But most, I mean, most sports, you want higher scores. I understand you want the worst, right? So, I, it goes on in this article, and this is all this stuff, I can't, I think, kind of fun. Andrew, who finished second individually after the losing playoff with, Andrew? Okay. After the playoff with Cedar Falls, Anthony Gallo. Then it goes on to explain what's kind of the back and forth, and all of that. And, but, finally happened was that your ball went into, into the water.
Yeah.
And that kind of bit apart.
Yeah.
Now, I've been on the golf course with Councilman Cope. Councilman Cope, what do you do when, when the water, when the ball's in the water?
First of all, I didn't hit it in the water.[376.37][376.37](laughter) I don't help the city administrator find his ball.[382.15][382.15](laughter)
Councilman Cope tried to retrieve the ball out of the water.
Like any good citizen would.[389.87][389.87](laughter)
He made a dual sport out of that, today. He not only played golf, but he also quit swimming.
I think I'm wearing those same pants, though. They did recover.[398.56][398.56](laughter)
Anyway, you guys are amazing. I mean, this is, this is just incredible. The scores that you had and your overall win are just absolutely incredible. So, congratulations to all of you. Congratulations to the coaches. I mean, you know, they don't, they, they, they aren't able to do what, what they do do without your, your, that comes from, and like, so, so, you obviously are coming from incredible top. Does coaches or, or gentlemen do, maybe do you want to say anything about, I mean, what, what does it feel like?
It's pretty cool. I mean, you do it two times in three years, second last year, and do it good, yeah.
Yeah. You guys are great. That's wordless. That's wordless. So, what do you like about the sport? Maybe you can talk me into taking it up.[449.62][449.62](laughter)
It's like get away, because like, you don't have to worry about, like, other people, like, school or your job, you just go out and play, you know, outside, that's fun.
It's a good stress reliever, isn't it?
Sometimes, some people say it's stressful, but you're taking it seriously, pretty fun.
That's great. So, some of you are seniors. So, what, what's next?
I'm just going to go to college after golf, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm heading to college.
Okay. Any others seniors?
Uh, me. I'm going to go to college, too.
Okay.
Also, making up.
This is fun all down.
Yeah.
You guys haven't attended bakeries that you're working at, studying at?
Yeah, I'm a student in accounting and finance.
Okay, good for you.
And just a senior, too.
Oh, yeah. That should serve you well. How about you?
Uh, well, I'm good, but I'm just going to go with this, it's a marketing topic.
Yeah? In, in child's schools?
Yeah. I'm going to try to go out, I see.
Okay, just get away?
Yes.
Judges, what do you, what do you have, what do you have to say about these guys?
They're a great group of guys and the families that they come from, just like a lot of the families in our program, huge support for what we try to do. I'm real fortunate having you two with me. Our athletic department and our district office are, you know, huge supporters, not only our athletics, but relay darts, I mean, everything that our kids do. And we're just real fortunate to have the support of the community and the district communities. Pretty special.
Well, I agree, I agree about our students all the time, and, and our, and our educators and, and our, that, you know, they, our, our kids excel at everything. They excel academically, they excel in art, and they excel in, in acting. And, and you two, it's a year after year after year. So, I don't know what's in the water, but something, something did happen, and really, really proud of you, really appreciate you coming in here. And, anything else?
No, we're just lucky to spend so much time with these guys. The course of the golf season is fairly compact, but it's high, high touch, high intensity. So, we always form a special bond with our teams, and I think that's part of our success.
Any other guys you need to add? Those of you that are going to stick around, are you going to keep playing golf?
Yes.
Okay, okay, you're not ready to hang it up yet.
No.
And do you have some younger guys coming in, you think?
Our mentor, Graham Marais, yeah, we'll, we'll.
Let's grab a picture. Counsel, do you want to run?
Yes.
The shot man, there is a, there is a. It's not that end.
And Mayor always stands in the middle.
What do I have here? That's the middle.
Well, right behind you. Yeah, maybe we have to scrunch up some here. How, how are we doing, Janet?
Very good.
I get another.
(inaudible).
Thanks for having us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your help.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be quite, great.
It was very tempting to just take this and just go down the line. We're happy to get you. Okay, well, the fun isn't over with yet. Next, we have a community update from Polk County Supervisor Robert Brunel.
I don't know if I'd describe it as fun, but I'm here. So, good to see everybody again. Thought I give you the county update and then say farewell to everybody, because my last Johnson City Council meeting, unfortunately, for, for me, I guess, but not for you so much, probably, but for me, probably. But starting with the county update, we always deliver a lot of gift cards, fairway gift cards, to the Partnership for Health or Johnson every year. Typically, it's been 60, this year we went up to 80. They ask for 80 cards, and the $25 gift certificates, or gift cards, because they distribute to their clients, starting Thanksgiving through Christmas. So that should be good. All fairway here locally, so that's, that's a good, good benefit that they provide. Last, I told Paula and Michael both this, I'll tell the rest of the council and staff, last meeting we had at Board of Supervisors, which is two weeks ago tomorrow, we approved a $100,000 grant for the Crown Point Project, and you should have the check tomorrow for that, Michael. If you don't, call Jill Otringer, so I can tell you.[794.87][794.87](laughter)
I have to, like, speed dial those, so.
Right. But, they, hopefully, we can get another, I, I'm trying to get another 100. I met with Jill last week to see if we can get another 100 out of the Community Family Services Department, which makes sense. We'll see how it goes, but hopefully we can. But 100, 100 is coming to you, that's probably, hopefully tomorrow, or Wednesday, probably. So, there you go for that. A couple of things going on. We're naming a new health director. Helen Eddy has been our health director here for several years. She's done a great job. She's retiring, same time I am, January 1st, and we hired a new one. We put an offer out, I should say, she accepted today, and she comes from the state, and it'd be very good. I can't give you her name at the yet, as yet, because I just can't, but, but somebody's coming in that I think you'd be very impressed with, and, and best wishes to have one. She's a great job. We have done, just finished a study, I'm going to talk a little bit about refugees and immigrants with you for a little bit, we just finished a study, I've seen this in Axios today, it's kind of interesting, around the idea of why refugees and immigrants, if they do, use bottled water rather than use city water. And it turns out that they do use bottled water way more than, they, they have very deep suspicions about the quality of city water, wherever it comes from. And this cuts across all the nationalities, Burmese, Congolese, really, our fastest growing group, fastest growing group right now is the Central Africans, and they have the same issues. But, so, it's kind of, it's more expensive, obviously, to do bottled water, and kind of creates a lot of plastic and whatnot, but, so, we're interested, we're working with them a little bit to assure them that the water's safe here, for one thing. But it was a very interesting study that was done by University of Iowa and others that came and, and did that, and turned out to be all true. Weird. But speaking of the refugees and immigrant population, we are going to be opening a Global Neighbors Facility, which we used to call the Welcome Center, but now we're calling Global Neighbors. We hired a fellow by the name of Mark Francesca, who's a Bosnian immigrant. He was in charge of Bureau of Refugee Services for the state of Iowa, and we hired him away from them, put him in charge of that, and so they're in the process of getting that set up. If you know where the Health Department now is, at 19th and Carpenter, across the street is the, the Life Services piece, we just opened up for sober center, sobering center, psych, we're just psych beds, stuff like that. And the next sort of that will be the Global Neighbors, and that will open up sometime during 2025, mid 2025, hopefully. So, we're going to be cutting with that also. But that'll be interesting. We're going to be putting TCBOs, ethnic-based community organizations into that facility. They will work with folks that come from various locales around the country. Most, most of our immigrants actually are, they call secondary immigrants. And what a secondary immigrant is, is the person, the family isn't settled here through the, through the, the US, through LSI, or, or one of the big refugee groups, settlement organizations. But they're, they're folks that come and either settle elsewhere, and, and move to Des Moines. And so that's in the number of thousands. We think there's about 61,000 refugees and immigrants in the metro right now. Metro, metro population in general is about 642 altogether, basically two counties, Polk and Dallas, but that's what it is. So it's almost 10% of our population, refugees and immigrants now. Interesting, isn't it? But that's, that's great, and, you know, I bet many people, you're going to have some bad apples, but most of, most of the refugees and immigrants here are just terrific folks. Work hard, they're good employees, good business people, they open their businesses, they've just done, been fantastically successful here. Maybe that's why they're all coming. So, that's been good. But Global Neighbor should help. A lot of these folks show up, and they come, they don't know where, you know, where do I go for healthcare, where do I go for school, how do I get on a bus, that kind of stuff. So they'll be able to talk to folks that speak their language and can help them out. So that'll be good, I think. We're working on some home, housing issues. There's been a lot in the news about homeless and housing and so forth lately. We're trying to work a, some, some ARPA money to buy up about 70 or 80 properties across the metro, and then build a new home there, $200,000. We think we've got that, we think we've got that figured out. This won't be for, on the registry report of this, and of course, we've got all these phone calls, people that don't live in my neighborhood, but this isn't a bunch of hobos when we put into these houses. This is going to be, these will be families that are homeless, and that's, that's what I want to talk about tonight a little bit, is homelessness among families, which is interesting, because it's defined as one, at least one child and one parent. Not necessarily has to be a nuclear family, mom, dad, two or three kids, but could be. That's very rare, but a lot of time, most of the time, it's one parent and a, a kid or two kids, and that's a homeless family. At the beginning of 2024, we had, we knew we had, let's see, 73 families that were homeless, homeless families. As of now, it's 291, so it's, it's almost tripled in the course of a year. What we've done with those families at Polk County is we have premier healthcare, puts them into hotels, and, for a while, and then we try to find them some, some more permanent housing. But we have $100,000 set aside for that hotel kind of payment, and that has gone to $300,000 now, and so that's getting kind of expensive, obviously, but we're trying to figure out what to do about that. There is a new family shelter opening up on Douglas, you know, Douglas School, which is over in East Side, and Hope Ministries is putting that together. It's about, being housing for about 40 families, so it doesn't solve the problem, that's for sure, but it'll help a little. So we're, we're working on that. There's, the homeless family situation is really interesting, though, because that's exploding on us. It's just really interesting. A lot of our homeless have, ones you see around are, have a lot of mental health issues, substance abuse issues, that's not so true here with the, with the family situation, but maybe one parent doesn't want them anymore, might be, but, but that's not really happening with them. So it's an interesting situation that they've got. We're working on it very hard, trying to get it fixed. Let's see. Last but not least, we have property tax legislation coming up this year in the legislature, probably, a lot of cities are considering franchise fee tax, including this one, and here's 1%, I believe, on, on electric and 1% on gas. You may be thinking about that. A lot of cities are, you're not the only ones. Waupu has decided to drop out of all further annexations because of this situation, the property tax situation. So we've got a lot of different reaction to this, and, and we'll see what happens, but best of luck with that. So.
Find time to leave us with you. Find time to leave us.
Yeah, right. That's what I thought, too. So there you have it. That's basically what's going on at the county right now. A lot going on, as always. I did want to mention, though, that much I enjoyed working with you guys, it's been great. From Olick Tara Park, that's way back, many, many years ago, we helped get that off the ground with you. Crown Point, I've been, we talked about that a little bit, it's been great. It's a congregant meal site, and we've had a lot of good folks in there, and county staff out there, and it's just worked really well. Kites in the Green is one of the coolest events in the whole metro, I think, in the springtime, so there's just been a lot of things we've worked on together. Partnership for Health or Johnson is probably, is my number one largest grant, Community Betterment Grant, I, the money I'm responsible for, I give 16,000 a year to them. And was, everybody else, you can, was getting 20, but they've kind of gone through some changes, so now, now the partnership is in lead for that one. But, so I've been, trying to pay attention to Johnson, it's been great working with everybody. Know a lot of the council members, a lot of the staff folks, and done very well. Of course, I knew, I knew Jim Sanders, when I, when I got the job, and I took Johnson over in 2012, and I knew Brian Lorenzo, and Bob Howland, and so forth. So I've had familiarity with a lot of the council members, and mayors, and former mayors and so forth, and Tom's been on council since, I think, what, 1951 or two.[1293.52][1293.52](laughter) He's been here a long time, so I've known Tom for a long time, too. So it's been great working with everybody. But farewell, and we'll see you around. I'm sure I'll be back. If I ever hear of some big group of neighbors coming to yell at you, I'll probably come and watch. That's always fun to watch. Not so fun to be in front of, but it's fun to watch. I won't do that, actually. So, thanks so much for being you, and it's been great working with you very much.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Brunel. We want to, we want to say thank you back. The partnership that we've had over these years has been absolutely amazing. You mentioned a lot of the programs that we've worked together on, and they've been successful because of your, your assistance in, in helping us, you know, fund them and, and grow them and, and develop them. So, appreciate all of the work and effort you put into those as well. So, before you slip away, I think we need to have a picture for the council.
That'd be great.
That was a great reception that you had the other night. You're kind of a farewell reception. Yeah, a lot of people turned out for it.
And some good experience, we had a lot of people I thought were talking, and a lot of them, I didn't even know.
Well, the coconut shrimp was amazing.[1386.37][1386.37](laughter)
Well, thank you so much. We'll see you around. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, we're still on our public communications. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first, to conduct a public hearing and consider, consider approval of the first reading ordinance number 1126, an official zoning map amendment for 1.77 acres from R2 low-density mixed residential district to C2 community commercial district. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:28.
So, the reason for this rezoning is, after going through the process with the final plot for Eagle Ridge Estates Plot 2, staff noticed that one of the ordinances incorrectly rezoned the entirety of the, the lot into the R2, or R2 residential district, where the intent of the ordinance was to only rezone the west, this west 1.74 acres. So, the intent and all of the agreements, the development agreements that are part of this, the original case, indicate and show that the west, or sorry, the east 1.77 acres is supposed to be maintained as that C2 commercial. And going through that process, that was everyone's, even staff's thought process. So, just discussing with Christine, kind of through the process, we wanted to go through this process by fixing the ordinance kind of our normal, typical way. My put, the image that we see is the zoning ordinance, or the zonings, the zones laid over what the final plot, which was approved for. And we haven't had any comments. The only kind of comment we had was a phone call to me, just asking for some clarification on kind of what we were going through. Once I had explained that to the resident, there were no other questions, more of just a, kind of why we were going through this again. So besides that, we have no comments. I'd be fully answer any questions for you guys.
Counsel, have any questions? Mayor, I do. Okay. When this came up before, listed in the description of what would be allowed on this property, there's quite, there's a number of things that are, are not allowed. I'm pulling it up right now to get to it.
Yeah, you're talking about the, here, I have it for you, right here for you, too. Talk about these, the items that, the uses that they did.
What's interesting is, at that time, we were also dealing with a car wash on Merle Hay Road, and as I recall from that meeting, the residents said, oh, hey, because they were in here, because discussing this, and they didn't want a car wash there either. But I don't see it listed as one of the prohibited uses. Does anyone else remember this discussion?
So, I don't, I know, I remember that at one point. Is this a three-reading type situation?
It can be, yes.
It's a public hearing to consider approval of first, first reading of ordinance?
Yes.
So, it's possible, maybe we could, you could consult the...
David, David was there.
Or the recording.
The recording.
Or the recording. Yeah. That's, that's a great suggestion, Councilman Cope.
And then if necessary, we could change that in the secondary. If, if that was something that would come up, and we...
Agreed to it.
Sort of said, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:32. Do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1126?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Nicole, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Item 4B, conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Merle Hay Road corridor traffic signals, and consider resolution number 24-286, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost, consider construction bids, and consider resolution number 24-287, making award of construction contract. We will open this public, sorry about that, at 7:33.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. On October 15th, the Iowa DOT received bids for the Merle Hay Road Corridor ICAP project. The project will make improvements at five intersections along Merle Hay Corridor between the High V Fast and Fresh and Northwest 62nd Avenue. There were three bids that were received for the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $907,000, $907,284.70. The apparent low bid received was $898,200, or $521, sorry, roughly about 1% underneath the engineer's estimate.
estimate. Certified bid tab does show that Van Monen Electric was the low bidder. The city has worked with Van Monen in the past, most recently at the Sixty-Second and Merle Hay intersection. They did the signals on that project, as well as the Merle Hay and Johnston Drive intersection project. Staff and the engineer does recommend accepting the bids for the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Matt?
Matt, is the bid tab in the packet?
No, this is a DOT letting, so the bid tab is confidential until the project is awarded.
Okay.
I do have copies with me tonight, so once it's awarded, I can hand those out.
This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, close the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash two eighty-six?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, discussion. Nicole Vogt, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item seven A, consider approval of resolution number twenty-four dash two eighty-four, setting dates of a consultation and a public hearing on a proposed amendment number fourteen to the Johnston East Central Tiff Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Johnson, State of Iowa.
Good evening, council. As the mayor outlined in the title of the agenda item, this is, this agenda is looking at setting a public hearing date and a consultation date to amend the East Central Tiff District. The proposed amendments would allow the council to consider, but not obligate the council to provide additional economic development incentives, and also expense marketing dollars and fund an economic development guide out of the East Central Tiff District. Again, this would not obligate the council to engage in any of these items that would be added as allowable expenses, though it would provide you the opportunity to consider. The consultation date with the other taxing entities that would be impacted is November twenty-fifth at eleven AM here at City Council Chambers, and then the public hearing date would be December sixteenth here at City Hall at seven PM. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council have any questions for Josh?
So, Josh, you indicated that one of the items is to printing of an economic development guide. Will the cost be spread across all the tiffs, or just this one tiff?
It would be appropriately spread across those that have already been granted that expense. I don't believe the other Tiff districts have the language in there. We are taking this opportunity now while we make this amendment to allow the expense at least in East Central, but we will have to, I believe the correct term is pro rata, expense that to each.
So what is sort of sparking the need for this update?
Our economic development guide was last out in twenty eighteen.
It is the economic, the printing of the economic development guide is what is sparking the need for the...
Correct. Yeah. Updating it, probably working with a writer, and then publishing it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Josh? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash two eighty-four?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Nicole Vogt, please.
Councilmember Coe.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven B, consider third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number eleven twenty-four, an ordinance amending the Johnston Revised Ordinances of two thousand seven by amending section sixty-nine point zero eight to modify parking on Northwest Ninety-Second Court. Jacob.
We have no additional comments or questions.
Council have any questions for Jacob? This is third and final reading. We have a motion to approve third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number eleven twenty-four, ordinance number eleven twenty-four.
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Nicole Vogt, please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven D, consider approval of claims in the amount of three million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Nicole Vogt, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. City administrator comments.
Just a couple of quick comments from myself. You heard County Supervisor Brunel talk about the hundred thousand dollar grant. Additionally, we received a one point one million dollar grant for Towner Drive, awarded by the NPO this last week. I really want to give thanks to, I know he's, I think he's online, but Dave Lowery for the work he put into both of those. You know, grants, there's always a lot of work. You don't always see a lot of work, sometimes you question, but especially the Towner Drive, I made one point one million dollars, that'll go a long ways. So thank you to Dave for his hard work on both of those projects. Otherwise, I don't have any additional comments. Is there staff comments? I don't see any today, so that's all my comments today. Thank you.
City council comments. Councilman Evans.
Nothing, thanks.
I'll pass, thank you.
I'll pass.
Councilman Burkhardt.
I'll pass.
I guess I'll make it unanimous.
Well, I will, I'm not going to break, I don't want to break the record, so I will, I'll pass as well. We do have a couple of items that we need to pick up from our work session, so if we can go back to those. First is the Johnston Five-Year Staffing Plan.
As a continuation from last year, we are now updating our second Five-Year Staffing Plan for the upcoming fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget year. Really, we use this tool to really help project out what our staffing needs are. There are some comparisons we do to other communities. What are those financial costs that we're overall looking for, all the staffing needs? And then, really, at the end of the day, this is really just a tool that we can use, that you can use, to understand what those needs are. We know that we're a growing community, we're seeing population growth between two to three percent. And so a lot of times, that is just necessitating some of the changes that we're seeing throughout the organization. On top of that, we just have some needs, departments, that really are just unmet today, and so trying to identify those needs. We know our citizens really appreciate the services that they receive, and we know that through our citizen survey. Ninety-four percent of our citizens are pretty, are satisfied overall with the services they receive. So staffing is what's needed to continue those good services as we provide all that. And obviously, staffing comes at a cost. And again, when we look at what our overall satisfaction on, just what their city tax dollars and fees are going, fifty-four percent of our residents are satisfied, are very satisfied. Twenty-six percent had no opinion on that. So again, overall, we're seeing very negative impacts when it comes to what the perceived impact of our taxes and fees are for the city. We know going forward, the legislation that property taxes have done, namely with Senate File, or excuse me, House File seven eighteen, and then this past legislative session with Senate File twenty-four forty-two, we know that there's a big impact, and so we're also trying to weigh those impacts, understand what there are, and certainly, we're getting a bigger picture, a better understanding what those impacts are. So this, tried to this year, really to account for that. And again, I think the final opening comment is, this is really just a roadmap. We know every year, as we revisit this, there'll be new changes, new challenges that we face, so some positions may fall off, some positions may be added, and certainly, that's what happened between last year's plan. Actually took ten positions out of the plan overall, in kind of recognition of some of the property tax impacts that we're facing. So it is a living document, and will change from year to year. Again, this year, we did provide, and you'll see this in the packet, some comparison cities. We did go back out and try to ascertain where staffing levels were. We did get a pretty good participation rate. Some of the cities, both in the Des Moines Metro, and some of our comparable cities did not provide us data this year like they did last year. So we just pulled their same data forward a little bit, or we did, we pulled it forward, so we didn't lose any cities, but some of the data from eight cities is a little, is a year past. So overall, when we look at the metro cities, you know, we had thirteen comparison cities that we looked at. We did pull out a Dell Bond Grant, Grimes, Indian Oil, and Windsor Heights for various reasons, because of either they have maybe a utility that we don't, like a cable or telecom, they don't have certain services, they don't have, for example, for Grimes and Bond Grant. So they weren't really good comparisons. So of the nine remaining comparison cities in the Des Moines Metro, the average was six point six four. This compares to Johnston, or this compares to last year of six point five six, and that's employees per thousand population. Johnston, we're at six point three six, so we were up a little bit, but we're still slightly below the overall average. And I would note, those averages of those nine go between four point nine one and eight point six nine as an overall range. When you look at comparable-sized communities, and again, those were Altoona, Arlington, Clinton, Corville, Fort Dodge, Marshalltown, Mason City, Muscatine, North Liberty, Otomo, so towns that are about twenty-five thousand in population. You know, for those, it was seven point nine employees per thousand. Johnston, again, is at six point three six per thousand, and the range there was five point one two to eleven point oh. And then if you take the twenty-three cities together, you would see an overall average of seven point one employees per thousand. So I think overall, I think one of the important things to say is, there is no average city, every city, there's a little bit different. Utilities are not utilities, but I think these just try to paint a picture of where we are. I think we are, we've always been historically a very lean operation. I think this shows that, and even as we look forward to some of the staffing additions we're looking, we're still going to be lean. Also, when we look at what our staffing needs would be, if you take that seven point one employees per thousand, you know, for our current population, we'd need to add thirty point four just to get to average. Additionally, when you look out for the next five years, you know, we're estimating about three thousand additional residents during that time. That would be an additional twenty-two point five employees, for a total of fifty-two point nine. Again, I will recognize right out of the get-go, that's really unrealistic for us to get to, but certainly, we need to keep our eyes on that, and we need to recognize that we need to just keep looking forward in how we staff, because if we start falling back, that's going to really impact the services. And again, when we look at our citizens' satisfaction, and really what's important to them, the services and quality of life, public safety, we need to continue to add staff to be able to keep that high ranking that the community has come to enjoy. So over the next five years, what we have requested, you know, we, kind of what we started out with, was first, we identified those positions we didn't fund in last year's staffing plan. That was two firefighter paramedics, a firefighter EMT, and a city clerk position, so we pulled those forward for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Additionally, like I said earlier, we did spend time identifying, trying to understand the impacts of the property tax legislation, so we did take ten positions out of the position, IT support specialist, IT director, a police analyst, a task force investigator in the police department, four firefighter paramedics, and two firefighter EMTs. So those are positions that were in the staffing plan last year that are not in this year's staffing plan. Additionally, we had six positions that department directors requested initially to be in this year's staffing plan that were not carried forward into the staffing plan. That was three police officers, two firefighter paramedics, and one firefighter EMT. So just to make clear, last year's staffing plan had fifteen firefighter positions in it. Chief Clark requested three additionals for a total of eighteen in the, in the five-year staffing plan, there's none, those positions that were not included. In the report that was included in the packet, you can see a summary of what was in the staffing plan for fiscal year, in the last year's staffing plan, the positions that we authorized, and we authorized five positions, I would note, two of those positions with an Ignite itself. We have not filled, there were half-year positions that were, or excuse me, in the Parks Rec Department for Ignite, we had two positions. They were funded to start January one, we don't intend to fill those at this position, at this point in time, really kind of watching when Ignite gets up and going. What we're hearing is, by January one of two thousand twenty-six is when, if construction starts, when they'll be open and operational, so we are including those two positions in for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. So the five is a little bit of a misnomer, because really, we only filled, and we only intend to fill three. And then you can see the overall staffing plan, and again, we're, we took ten positions And then there's a table that shows by year and department where all the positions are. I would note, in fire in particular, this does show the full number of firefighters. If you follow the twenty-eighty and the funding formula, that ten FTEs really for us, and cost-wise, become six point two position, or six point two FTEs. I'd also note that there's various departments where some of these positions have a clear impact to the general fund. You do have other positions, like within the Public Works Department, there are utility positions in there. Those come out of the utility fund, so they don't have an impact to the general fund, and they don't then have an impact to the overall property tax levy that the city would have. So we did do an overall fiscal kind of impact analysis as we put this together. There's a number of assumptions that go into this, and so certainly, we've used the current kind of pay ranges, we kind of projected out using our overall compensation plan that the council has adopted last year, along with our compensation policies of how we progress people through, and we give COLA increases, we've looked at current contracts. We do assume that when you look in out years for our bargaining and non-bargaining, there's a two percent COLA, again, that's following our compensation plan. Certainly, as those contracts get negotiated, that could go up or down. We use PFM property tax projections, they are a little bit conservative, but we did use those. Additionally, for new employees, we use kind of the highest, higher-cost employee benefits, like family health insurance, so that we're kind of doing that. But we also plan for employees to start at the entry point. That doesn't always happen, certainly for after specific talent, we do hire to, we do pay it into the organization. So there's a Table C in the document that you can review. What Table C shows is, what is the overall impact just to property taxes if we fund the full staffing plan? On the left hand of the table, you see kind of the base cost, our current employees, not adding any new employees. The right side of the table, you see our base plus new employees. Overall, because of property value changes, we have one of our Tiff districts, it'll be sunsetting within this horizon. You actually see our overall levy rate would go down at the end of five years, even with inflationary increase, staffing by almost five cents. Conversely, you look at when we add the, all the new staffing that's requested in this, we would see a levy increase if we just funded by property taxes of just over a dollar. Now, I would note, if you look in fiscal years twenty-nine and thirty, there's some highlights there, and what I'm really trying to point out is, we did look at, again, with some of these property tax bills... property tax bills, we will hit a point that we are actually, we're not actually able to levy to the levy, to the level to fully fund the positions. And this is even accounting for taking all of like our employee benefit, our tort liability, the emergency management, and moving out of the general fund into the unlimited levies that the state allows us to have. So there is an issue that we would not be able to fully fund the staffing plan just through property taxes. Any questions on that table before I move forward? Moving forward, Table D, it's really kind of the same concept. Left side is base cost, right side is our base employee cost plus the staffing plan. But this one has a franchise fee that would go to 5% starting in fiscal year 2026 so that we would get revenue, we'd start the franchise fee at a point that we could actually get revenue starting in fiscal year 2026. And then we would have, you would see actually with our property taxes, just base staff, we'd actually see a reduction of overall levy rate by 64 cents. Conversely, when we add the, all the staffing that's requested in here, we'd see a levy increase of 41 cents overall. Questions on that? The overall, what I would be recommending is, as we look forward to this, is obviously we think the, I believe anyhow, that the staffing that we have in here is pretty minimal and really just keeps kind of status quo operational, that we're not falling back. Certainly in some cases, we may be falling back, but again, I think it is the minimum staffing that we need. To fund it, I think what I would, what I do recommend is we do implement a 5% franchise fee. I would recommend that we begin that and implement that for a March 1 start so that when we get the first revenues from Mid-American Energy, we're receiving that in July, and we're getting the four payments that we get from Mid-American Energy in fiscal year 2026 to actually fund these positions. We would have no levy increase in 2026 is what I would be aiming for as we put together both the staffing and personnel component. Additionally, with the overall operational changes. Now, if you go back to Table D, what you would notice is, we would actually see overall, we'd actually receiving more revenue than what we would need by almost 10 cents. When you look at out years, what I would recommend in 27, 28, 29, and 30 is that we plan for a 10 cent a year increase each of those fiscal years going forward. Fiscal year 2027, we're projecting actually about a 31 cent increase that we would need. So we would have that dime that we saved last year, we could pull that forward. We'd have to eat a little bit of reserve, so there's going to take some work to kind of plan for that. But again, just a 10 cent increase then in fiscal year 2027. We then get into a position in fiscal year 2028 where we need up. But again, by the end of fiscal year 30, by kind of just doing that prudent planned 10 cent increase each year, it's kind of a nice plan to move forward. Now, I think long-term, there's some questions. Obviously, operational costs are going up. We will work hard as staff to try to find ways to contain those costs, but there's certainly, some costs are certainly not controllable. We could get a healthcare plan increase that is way above what we planned, and those things then become unexpected and we'll have to kind of retool for it. We may see, you know, obviously our cost of goods, vehicles, major construction, those keep generally exceeding what inflationary increases are. So we're going to have to work through those. I think we're also trying to look at ways of how we can become more inventive and stuff, like for example, 62nd Street. You know, that is, you know, going to be reconstructed in two years, is that right? You know, we've planned for the last five years that we're actually going to use East Central Urban Renewal Tax Agreement financing. Council's already placed that in the Urban Renewal District, the entire roadway, as a way to fund it. You know, do we look at other roads that we're doing, especially East of Merle Hay? Certainly, it's not a traditional route that we've done it, but there is dollars in the East Central Urban Renewal District that, you know, we could effectuate in that. So I think there's some ways, and there's a lot of conversations that will have to happen before we go down that path. But I think there's ways that we're, we're working through and trying to tool to find ways that we can maybe shift some stuff that would come out of the property tax levy side and move it into some other areas just to find more flexibility overall. Any questions on that generally? One point I would just point out, there's a paragraph in here and you can read it, but I just would point it out. I mean, obviously, public safety is our most critical service that we provide to our residents. We did do analysis of what if we just funded the public safety positions in here and took out all the non-public safety positions. We would still, you know, again, if you remember, we'd need about a dollar increase overall in our levy increase to support all the positions. Just public safety, it's 78.3 cents. So a lot of those positions, again, you think about even the city clerk position, for example, 20 or 40% of that is planned to come out of other, other departments like our utilities. And so there's other, other funding sources for those, just, not just the general fund. And then you have your utility positions. Again, those come out of the utilities. So it is one of those things that while there's a lot more positions other than public safety in, in the five-year staffing plan, it clearly, it is one of the more impactful and rightfully The last thing I'll just point out is there's some comparison data and just information I know the council always likes to see. You can see for fiscal year 2025, where the city of Johnston does rank, we're kind of in the middle when you look at communities of greater than 5,000 in Polk and Dallas Counties, kind of that metro area. So, you know, and when you think about, again, a lot of cities are right at 10, 11, $12. We're 1143 now. And then when you look at franchise fees, you can see there's a number. Charging franchise fees, and certainly you've heard from Supervisor Brownell, I didn't pay him for that discussion today, but, you know, communities are considering franchise fees. It's been in, in the news. And certainly, you know, it's something that I think with some of the stresses around property taxes, it is being considered more. But there's a list of who has them now and what they're enacted at. I do know, I believe West Des Moines last week, they went to a 1% franchise fee. So that's been approved now there. I had conversations last week with Urbandale, there a franchise fee move. So with that, tonight's discussion really is just review and discussion, ask questions. We'll bring back a final staffing plan, let some more detail in here. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council has this evening.
Council, any questions?
Mayor, I have just a couple. I'd like to direct your attention, Mike, to page, there's a PDF attachment to our agenda in this discussion item. Page 14 starts to list out by fiscal year the positions. And I just want to make sure I understand, under police officers throughout this entire table there of Table 1, it lists like police officer 2-6, police officer 3-6, it goes to 1-7 in later years. Is that the, is that the pay range that we're looking for?
I believe it's the shift, but I'll defer that to Chief McDaniel.
Okay. Yeah, it's intended for us, we have three different shifts. So you've got the 1, 2, and 3, and then the dash 6 or the dash 7. That would be the number of officers assigned to those three different shifts.
Okay.
So it's, it correlates to another internal document that we have for strategic planning and staffing that is a different graphic image.
Thank you for clarifying that. There also was an indication in that same, I think it's all lumped together, is Table 1, page 18, that indicates new requested positions by department and fiscal year over the next five years, and then states zero FTE throughout all of those. What, what does that mean?
So, great question, and I need to probably put some clarification in here. There's kind of two different sets of documents that are going in here. And so if we go back up to page 14, this is the start of, we're putting in all the new positions. And then this financial tables below that shows each position and what the, the cost is and when they come online shows that.
So, so in essence, this page 18 is teeing us up for the document that follows, which would be if we did not add any new positions.
Correct. So what, what page 18 is, okay, we're not adding any new positions. And then this is the financial documents. You don't see any positions in this document.
That's, I just, so, so we have hypothetical scenarios starting really, you know, throughout this, I guess in that entire table, if we funded it.
So if you go back to like the tables C and D, when we have the left side, it's really being driven off the no new staff, and the right side's being driven off the tables with the new staff.
Thank you.
Great question. I'll, I'll clarify that.
Thanks.
Other questions for Mike?
I don't really have a question. I just, I think, first of all, I really appreciate, I think, pulling this together. I think looking at staffing over a five-year plan is a really a positive step forward. I'm glad, something we've been doing the last couple of years. I think it's a move away from, you know, usually when we make these decisions, it's around budget time, and it was always hard to kind of look at them, look at how that position fit, fit into the bigger picture of the whole enterprise. And I think this allows us to do that much better. So really appreciate the process and all the effort that's, that's gone through to it. I also appreciate highlighting the fact that, you know, this, it is a trade-off, right? So, and, you know, we have a certain amount of resources, and we also have a certain amount of needs and expectations of our citizens of a service level. And we're not, we're, we're not probably going to be able to staff at least 16 positions to help us meet those service and needs level because of some of those revenue constraints that are out there. So if somebody would come to me and say, well, you're just funding all these positions. No, we're not, right? I think that pretty clearly highlights that we've identified and tried to strategically identify that we're our, we're not going to be able to fulfill everything because of kind of the revenue environment that we are in. You kind of raised a question sort of towards the end about what if we went just down the path of just focusing on public safety in, in those positions? I, I would, I, I don't believe that's the right approach. I do believe we need to look at the organization holistically, you know, both in the administration side, public, public, public works, the library, all of the different agencies, and making sure that we're looking at it holistically. So just kind of want to make, that would be my, my preference is that we, we don't take it just to focus on, on, on public safety and, but instead look at it holistically. So that just, was kind of my thoughts and reactions on it as we reviewed it. But thank you for your work and efforts on this, and I know you spent a lot of time on it, so.
Well, thank you for your comments. First of all, let me just say thank you to staff because this is a huge undertaking for them. And certainly, it's a lot of hard dialogue. So I really appreciate staff for what they do. Because it is a lot of work. On the comment that you said on just funding public safety, I 100% agree with you because at the end of the day, all the staff need to be supported. And as we grow, we need, we need bodies throughout the organization to, to continue to support all of the functions we do in, in the city organization. So you think about our HR functions, I'm not going to pick on anyone, but I'm going to pick on someone. Cindy does a great job on HR, city clerk work, and IT work. But it, but it's a lot on one person. And as we've been a growing organization, we need to invest in more resources so that we can continue to provide the support to the whole organization so public safety and everyone else can keep doing the good work they do. So I agree with you that we, I would not ever recommend that we just invest in public safety, but I do think it's one of those important metrics that I get asked that, so I, I provide the data.
Mike, a quick question on the franchise, and I know there's been a lot of attention being given to the franchise fees right now. I guess my, my question is, and, and maybe, I don't know if you would know the answer to this, or maybe Councilman Kope, is there a conversation at the legislature about capping the franchise fee?
I haven't heard about capping it. I've, I've certainly have heard speculation about some different approaches to when cities make increases, that they may have legislation that says you have to go through certain processes. One of the things that's been thrown out there that if you increase it more than 2%, you'd have to go to the Ivy Utility Board to get a review before you do that. I think certainly, this next legislative session, we know property taxes will likely be one of the session discussions. I think city, one of those legislative sessions. So I think certainly, it's a timely discussion as we think about that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mike? Well, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, and certainly this is a
Good information.
A lot of information. If, if there's questions or follow-up, certainly let me know. I plan to bring kind of the final document in probably about four weeks for you guys to review and approve. All right? Thank you.
We have one remaining item this evening, and that is a quarterly update on the strategic planning initiatives.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, thank you. This will be pretty brief, I think, tonight. As you know, we have, we've accepted our overall strategic plan back in October, and so we've been working on it. And actually, even though we accepted in October, work had really begun already previously on it, but we wanted to take this opportunity to kind of give an update of where we are at on the different tasks. So overall, when you look at, we have 231 individual task items within the strategic plan. We have completed work on about 14% of those items, which I think is a good testament of just the number that we were actually doing work. You know, staff has ongoing work on about 5% of them. 1% of them has, has seen some disruption or no progress, and we'll go through those and highlight those tonight. But another 19% of them have seen some progress. And then 60% of them are really future items yet. So, you know, we're still, you know, they're items that haven't come to fruition or timely, they're not ready to come before the council, and that's what the plan laid out. So work is going well, I believe, overall. Tonight, we're just going to take a really quick, brief look at it, and we're just going to highlight the items that are red in here because we don't want to take all the time up yet tonight or, or make it a little bit brevity. But one of the items was initial workshop on increasing the utility franchise fees. We haven't, I mean, I guess some of it happened tonight, but there'll be some additional discussions that we'll have in November. We were supposed to have done that in October. I just tried to get this and get it, get the data together and get it to you. So that was a little bit why the delay, but we'll be changing that to some progress a little bit after tonight's meeting. Community investment or the CIP program. Again, we're, we're, staff is working on it, we're, we are putting together and compiling it. It was supposed to be, the council had said we want to see it in September. We still are working through it. Reality is, one of the realities, there's very few new items that are being added to the overall CIP. And Sarah, correct me, is it four we're adding? The number of new items being added to the CIP? Yep. So it'll be a quick discussion when we have that. But, you know, we know there's a lot of big projects like East Merle Hay that's taking a lot of that, Merle Hay Road project that'll be happening. So again, work is progressing, it's just not, hasn't met the deadline that's laid out. I may change some of these because I feared like no progress really, it's, we've had some progress, but it's really a disruption. We haven't met kind of the timing that the council has suggested. Scrolling through, it's again, a lot of these white ones are items that haven't, we haven't met timely, or the, the, the date to get it before you still hasn't, isn't here. The water-based facilities, and, and this is really the pool aquatic center discussion, a little bit of a disruption, obviously just staffing change related to that. I don't want to speak for Jeff, but I'll speak for Jeff, he's back there. But, but I know we're, it'll be an item that we'll be working on and, and kind of progressing here, trying to come up with that survey. We certainly will work with quality of life, get that survey before them and back to the council before we actually send it out. And we had a number of discussions and really, how do you set out a survey that you don't create expectations, but yet get a survey that really accurately kind of reflects kind of the questions, discussions. This thing, certainly, some of the discussion with the Waki referendum going down will probably be an item that we'll want to discuss through about how that may impact if we want to continue thinking about the water-based facilities or not. So it's an item that's still, it's, work is happening, we just didn't meet the November date that was in there.
Mike, just for clarification on that subject, I see that it's assigned for quality of life, a review once it moves forward. We had a separate ad hoc committee for this process specifically. Is that ad hoc committee now disbanded?
No, it isn't. It certainly will continue to work with that kind of No, it isn't. It certainly will continue to work with that kind of smaller group too, which was the mayor and you, correct? Was there, I think that was, it was just the two of you. So we'll certainly continue to work with that group.
Okay.
Any other questions on the water-based facilities? I believe there's just, there may not be anymore. Yep, that was it. So again, I think overall, this shows that, you know, staff is making good progress on it. Did council have any specific questions as they were looking through the tracker? I would note, we did put the tracker in the library, and we'll continue to update that. The full strategic plan is also in the tracker too. So it's in the library for you all, so.
Any other questions, Council? If not, we are done with that item. I think we are done with the all of the items that we had scheduled for this work session as well as the regular meeting. Is there anything else to come before the council this evening? If not, we are adjourned.